Good evening. The regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community School Board of Education is now brought to order on Monday, February 13th, 2017 at seven o'clock. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone. Your attendance this evening reflects your interest in local education and is greatly appreciated. So at this time, we're going to do 226.17, the Pledge of Allegiance. And today, we have two students from Schweitzer Elementary School to lead us in the pledge, and that will be Blakely Meek and Emma Tanner. For Tanner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is for Blakely Meek. Blakely is seven years old, and I'm in first grade in Ms. Mashawski's class at Schweitzer. She has a brother Gavin, who is a sixth grader at Adams. She lives with Gavin, her mom, her dad, and a fish which she bought to Petco in Westland. Her favorite color is purple. She loves bacon and cheeseburgers, but not bacon cheeseburgers. At Schweitzer, Blakely enjoys math, especially addition and subtraction. She loves to read and enjoys Captain Underpants, books with her brother Gavin. Sometimes he lets her borrow. Blakely enjoys special celebrations at our school and is really excited for her Valentine's party at the Hundred Day of School. Blakely was recently interviewed for a Fox Two News feature on technology. She has her own YouTube channel, but she only works it on Saturdays and Sundays when she's not at school. And we also have Emma Tanner. Emma is nine years old and is a fourth grader with Ms. Brown's class at Schweitzer. She lives with her mom and dad, her aunt and cousins. Emma has six pets, two dogs, and four leopard geckos. Her favorite color is purple. She loves tacos and Chinese food from the China Star Palace.
I like that, too.
Me, too. Delicious. At Schweitzer, Emma loves her principal, Ms. Bricky. She thinks she is very kind, and she was the first, when she was her first grade teacher with Ms. Mashawski. Ms. Brown is an extra-special teacher to Emma this year because she always comes up with creative activities for their class. Emma likes social studies and learning about different cultures. Emma has participated in the archery club and was recently had a role in the Wayne Westland Community School District Children's Drama Club participation or production of Beauty and the Beast, and she is a hard-working member of a student lighthouse team. Emma recently worked with other lighthouse team members on a bulletin board in the school. Emma was responsible for posting lighthouse team pictures. And we have trustee, I'm sorry, Vice President, Madell to give the awards.
If I could get you to turn around and face the audience. For each of you for participating in our flag ceremony, we have some certificates for you suitable for framing or going into a memory book that your parents might be putting together for you. So, Blakely, on behalf of the Wayne Westland Community School District Board of Education, I want to thank you so much for coming here today and showing us your expertise in doing the pledge. Now, do you have anybody here that you would like to introduce who came with you who's special?
My brother.
Embarrassed. Who else? Because I know he didn't drive.
My daddy. And my mommy.
Anybody else who's special, maybe a classroom teacher, or maybe your building principal?
Ms. Bricky.
That's better. Emma, congratulations. Thank you for doing such a good job. And you also are getting a certificate suitable for framing or going into a memory book. Do you have somebody special that you brought today?
My brother Hunter.
Aww.
My mom, my dad, my nana, my papa, and my aunt.
The building principal came.
And Ms. Bricky.
Yes.
And Ms. Burgess.
So, we know that this is a school night, so if you need to scoot out because you've got some homework or you need to get to bed on time so you can get up tomorrow morning and face the day ready to go, we understand. But thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you, ladies. Ms. Johnson over here is going to take your picture.
Ladies, can you come this way?
She's going to do them out in the hallway.
Yep. Okay. We're going to give Mrs. Madell a chance to get back. Moving on to item number 227.17, roll call, please. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Here.
Dr. Weaver?
Here.
Ms. Hines?
I'm here.
Ms. Madison is excused. Ms. Madell?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present. Okay, let the record reflect, six in attendance and one excused. Moving on to item number 228.17, recognitions and presentations. Dr. Harmala.
Yes, this is a wonderful night for us. We are very pleased to have three different presentations for you. Two of those are very exciting. We're going to start off with a recognition from Franklin Middle School and Stevenson Middle School of our Young Inventors. And Ms. Sherry Grove, the principal at Stevenson, Kim Mandrell, the teacher at both schools, and Ms. Pringle, the assistant principal at Franklin, are here to share the Young Inventors.
Thank you, Dr. Harmala. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Education, Cabinet members, and families and friends. I am beaming with pride as I know Franklin Assistant Principal Ms. Pringle and Ms. Williamson are as well in regards to our students and their amazing achievements at the Young Inventors Competition that we recently attended. The students have been working under the supervision of one of our fantastic educators, Ms. Mandrell. She works at both Franklin Middle School and Stevenson Middle School in our Industrial Arts Department, and she has led these students through the Young Inventors Competition that we began earlier in the year. The great thing about the Young Inventors Competition is it is in partnership with some of our community partners and business partners, including Alpha USA and also our Viper Factory and Corporation that Ms. Mandrell's been working alongside of. And our students tonight were finalists in that competition along with other students from Livonia District Schools as well as Wayne Westland Public Schools. And so, we were really, really honored when they were chosen as finalists with their inventions. But also, we are very excited to report that Wayne Westland took home first and second prize overall out of all of the middle schools that attended the competition. One, our first-place finalist overall was from Franklin Middle School, Stephen Smith. And our second-place overall winner was Jillian Downey from Stevenson Middle School, along with all of our finalists, which, Dr. Harmala, I know you're going to introduce those students. So, we want to thank all of our families for their support through that endeavor. Of course, Ms. Mandrell for all her efforts. And congratulations to not only our finalists, but also all the students who competed and participated in that great program. And lastly, a great, great prize for some of these students is they're going to tour the Detroit Viper Factory as part of their reward. So, we're excited for that, along with Ms. Mandrell.
Awesome. I...
Dr. Harmala, before I come down, am I right that this was our first year participating in that?
This was our first year participating in that.
So, see how we'd just be out there rocking, "First year." And we just took over. It was so exciting to see those kids and their inventions.
It was. I'm going to call the names of the students, and if you would come down in front, then our Board President Shawna Walker will give your certificates. From Franklin Middle School, Megan Falls, Dwayne Ponder, Emmanuel Salazar, Stephen Smith, and Gage Water Camp. And if they're not all here, we'll get their certificates. And from Stevenson, Jillian Downey, Minar Hamid, Colton Harden, Garrett Lesinski, and Lilly Peters. There you go.
So, it was like, yeah, like I said, it was really... It was really exciting to see all the inventions that the young people had. I mean, it's like things that, like, things that you could really use in your everyday life. They really need to try to see how far they can go. I think one person had the toothpaste. You put the toothpaste...
Stephen, he's not here tonight, but that was our first-place winner.
You put the toothpaste actually in the toothbrush, and you have like a six, lasts for like six months or something like that. It was really cool. It was a good idea. So, on behalf of the Board of Education, we want to say thank you for just representing our district and just doing an amazing job, and you guys keep up the good work. So, Megan Falls, is that correct? So, it says, "The Wayne Westland Board of Education recognizes your achievement in the 2017 Young Inventors Contest, acknowledges your efforts at the Board of Education Regular Meeting." So, congratulations to you. Jillian Downey? Congratulations. Colton Harden? Congratulations to you. Lilly Peters? Did we spell it right? Okay. Congratulations. Thank you for coming out and sharing this with us, and we're so proud of you. And she's going to take a picture with you right now.
And we will send the certificates back with Ms. Grove and Ms. Pringle to make sure the other students receive them. Thank you. Our second recognition for tonight is from Wayne Memorial High School, and it's our Ethics Bowl champions. And I'm going to call up Mr. Kevin Weber, principal, and he will introduce his team.
Thank you, Dr. Harmala, members of the Board, and listening audience. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight with you. This evening, I have the privilege to recognize some of our outstanding students at Wayne Memorial for an outstanding achievement that they had. A few weeks ago, we had two teams compete in the Ethics Bowl. Both teams represented themselves and our district very well, and one of our teams won the entire event, becoming the state champs. Some people may wonder what Ethics Bowl is, and I will allow our one guest, Janine Delay, who's the president of the Ethics Committee, to explain that a little bit better. But I kind of liken it to debate, the modern version of debate, where students are given topics and they have to exchange ideas along ethical lines and thoughts of well-developed ideas. The students here tonight represent the very best of the students, not just in Wayne Westland Schools, but in the entire state of Michigan. Their ability to effectively communicate complex ideas is a valuable skill that these students have and will serve them well in their future endeavors. As a principal at Wayne Memorial High School, I'm very proud to congratulate these students and their coach. So, congratulations to Michaela Wallace, Joseph Wise, Ashley Highland, Zoe Wolf, Hannah Miller, Chavam Patel, and of course, Coach Mr. Kangus. Congratulations on your achievement, and I wish you the very best as you guys head to North Carolina to represent the state of Michigan in the national competition. And so, I'd like to turn it over. I would now like to turn it over to a special guest who decided to join us tonight, Janine Delay, who's the president of the Ethics Bowl.
So, thank you very much. I'm really honored to be here, and I wouldn't have missed this for the world. So, what I'd like to do is explain just a little bit, actually, ethics is the un-debate. It is a competition that prizes very deep analytical skills and thinking. It's a part of philosophy, and all of the students are coming up with responses, their best answers together. And we are absolutely thrilled to have this team represent the state of Michigan against 24 other states. Ethics Bowl has experienced explosive growth. This is only the second year that Wayne Memorial High School has participated in this program. I think that the students would say that this was a very stiff competition, and the judges, just to tell you a little bit about the prestige, the judges come from nine universities throughout Michigan. The University of Michigan, University of Michigan Dearborn, Seattle Heights, Adrian, Michigan State. And in the final round, those are the best judges, and these are philosophy professors of great renown. So, I am so honored to be here, and I really, I'm emotional about this because I think that these are great representatives.
I just have a few thanks, because I'm not so... But I just want to thank the Board and District for their support. I also want to thank Kevin Weber and Lindsay Rousseau as well for theirs, and Janine for putting on a great show and giving us an opportunity to be different folks. And of course, the students rising to the occasion as they did. They worked very hard from October through February, and it shows, and they deserve to be there. So, I'm very proud to be with them and very lucky. So, thank you very much.
And students, we have certificates for the students as well, so if they would come down, and Mr. Buckaloo will present you with your certificates. Students can come on down to where the students led the pledge. That puts you on camera for everybody. There you go. Perfect. Tom, the microphone is behind you there.
Well, congratulations to all of you. We get plenty of opportunities to recognize our students for academic achievement from time to time. We also get an opportunity for recognizing our athletes. It's a rare treat indeed to be able to recognize you folks who have competed in an academic fashion in a competitive setting. You're going to go on to a national competition next, and that's going to be where?
North Carolina.
North Carolina, which would be an outstanding trip. I know you'll enjoy that. Who did you, who did you compete against in the final round?
Green Hills, Ann Arbor.
In Ann Arbor? I had the opportunity to tour the Green Hills facility many, many years ago when I was in college, and it's an outstanding school. I believe that it's a tuition school, a private school. And you've done us proud. You've taken on one of the best schools in the state and showed them the second-place ribbon. We couldn't be more proud of you for that. So many times, we tend to overlook what a wonderful job our young people do and their teachers and their administrators. So, congratulations to each one of you. I have certificates for all of you, and I will read one of them, and then, since they're all the same, I won't bore you any longer. It says, "Award of Recognition presented to," and in this case, it's Ashley Highland, Wayne Memorial High School. And it reads, "The Wayne Westland Board of Education recognizes your achievement in the 2017 Ethics Bowl and acknowledges your efforts at the Board of Education's Regular Meeting," which is this evening. And it's signed by our superintendent, Dr. Harmala. And so, I will just hand these out now. The first to Ashley Highland. The second one to Hannah Miller. Congratulations to you. And the third to Michaela Wallace. Did I do that right? And the fourth, Chavam Patel. And the fifth goes to Joseph Wise. And the last one to Zoe Wolf. And we have one other certificate, and that is to go to Gina Gunther, who was unable to be here today. Well, would anyone here like to say anything to our group?
I'll say something. I guess I... I just wanted to thank the District for making it possible to actually go to North Carolina and compete in the competition because I've honestly learned so much just from the experience itself. I've learned how to work with other people and appreciate their, like, opinions and understand people better. And I just really thank you for letting me further than that.
I'd like to thank Mr. Kangus and Mr. Weber and Janine for giving us this opportunity and for Mr. Kangus believing in us this entire time. We were lucky to make it to the second day. But when we won, it was crazy. It was a crazy experience, and we'd like to miss them for that.
Thank you very much, and I mean that. Thank you for what you've done for our school district. Thank you again.
Jenny, picture down here, or out in the hall, and take your prize cup there to be in your picture with you. Thank you very much, and best of luck. And as we transition now, we will have a presentation from Schweitzer Elementary for School Improvement, and Jenna Mullins, our Director of School Improvement Services, is going to kick us off.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, the wheels of school improvement are constantly turning. Where we are right now in the district is all of our buildings are completing a school systems review. And what they do in that component of the school improvement process is look at all of their processes, procedures, and protocols in place for both student and staff and community support, and look at what they need to do, what they're doing well, and what they need to improve on. Those will be submitted to the state in the middle of March. All of our buildings are working on them right now. Also, one luxury we have this year with school improvement is the autonomy within our buildings to create a plan that, with a very narrow focus, more narrow than we've ever had the ability to do. One school that's already doing this well is Schweitzer Elementary. So, I would like to introduce the principal, Mrs. Kristen Bricky, and she's going to share some of the great things that they're already doing at Schweitzer.
I feel very short following Jenna up here. Thank you, Jenna. Thank you, Dr. Harmala, and thank you to our Board. I consider it a great honor to be able to be the voice of Schweitzer Elementary and stand here and celebrate all the great things that are happening at our school. I will say it all the time, Schweitzer is a great place to be, and there are many, many reasons, and I could stand here and tell you about them all evening. I will not do that. But one huge celebration that I want to share with everybody is, for the past, I'm not sure if it was the past three or four years, we were on the state reform office's priority school list. We have recently been released from that status, so that is a huge celebration for us and for our district. Again, what has led us to this achievement is many different things, but just like Jenna says, said, we have a very focused approach for our school improvement plan. We, and you can follow along, I have our social worker here, Ms. Burgess. We have a very short presentation, but we have three big ideas. And just like learning targets that students have in a classroom, I think of these as our learning targets for our staff. So, if you walk into Schweitzer, every staff member knows that these are our three big ideas and what they mean and how we do this at Schweitzer. So, the first is professional learning communities, the second is best practices, and then the third is extended learning time. Along with professional learning communities, right now, we're really working hard on sustaining our positive collaborative culture. And what drives us at the very top level is our mission, vision, and beliefs. I think for a lot of organizations, missions and visions can be just kind of, you know, static things, but I don't believe that's truly the case at Schweitzer. We believe in the best in kids, and we are a staff that at this time, we don't celebrate problems, we are solution-focused. And part of all of this is we have weekly PLC or professional learning community time. This is where grade-level teachers get together. They have dedicated time weekly where they can, you know, have conversations about best practice, what's going to drive and help our students, and I'll go into that a little bit more. But they have time that's dedicated to this for weekly, and then twice a month before schools. This is something years ago, we saw at the secondary level, but elementary schools weren't doing it. Teachers kind of taught in isolation, alone in their classrooms. And I'd say about five years ago, our district moved towards this collaborative approach. We've also had some really strong coaching at our school in literacy, math, and science. And again, teachers have to work together and collaborate and make sure they're on the same page. Two things that kind of are the most important things to me, I'll talk about next briefly, with our professional learning community, something that we have learned how to do with help from coaches, and I think we're pretty good at it at this point, is looking at our assessment data of our students. So, we do this on a weekly basis, but we do this in a really big way after our students take the NWEA assessments. We sit down, teachers get half-days to work on this. We look at our students' test data. Our teachers analyze it. We look for strengths, we look for weaknesses, areas that, you know, we just have to put a little bit more effort in. And our teachers have dialogues and conversations about this, and this is, I'm just excited about all this educational speak right now. But we also do something called ILCs, or Instructional Learning Cycles. So, we take that information that we glean from our data dialogues, and we find areas that our students can quickly grow and obtain success in. So, we figure out whatever that standard is, our teachers as grade-level teams develop pre- and post-assessments. They talk about how they'll teach this best, and then they go about and do it. And then, in their weekly conversations as PLCs, they go back to it. They talk about how their students are doing, and we've seen a lot of growth from this. So, it's been, it's been a very positive thing for us. And I promise you, I won't talk about everything on this page. The second area focused for us is best practices. I'll talk just about three things very briefly, but one thing that is very important that I mentioned before was learning targets. So, a couple years back, when everybody started hearing about learning targets, it was, well, students need to understand what they're expected to learn, and we did that. We would put it in our lesson plans, we would post I-CAN statements on the board, and that was kind of it. We felt like, hey, we're telling them what they need to learn. Well, of course, we've moved on to the next level where it's explained to students, they know through whatever they're engaging in, whatever lesson, where we expect them to go and what we expect them to master. And at this point, if you were to walk into a classroom at Schweitzer, they'd be able to tell you, students would be able to tell you what the learning target is and what the expectation is. What we're moving towards now is what does success look like for that learning target? So, we have some classrooms that are moving towards that, and everybody in the next coming months will move that way. Another thing, and I know you've probably heard about it from many different schools, is the Leader in Me Program. I won't go into a ton of detail about that, but programs can be just that. They can be programs. At our school, it's more than a program. It's something that we believe in, and I want to acknowledge Ms. Burgess. She's our social worker, and she is our driving force at Schweitzer. It has really changed the culture of our school. We look for ways for kids to lead, and when I say lead, it's not stand up in front of everybody. It's what's their strength? What do they excel in? And we're finding really awesome ways to do that every day. And then, the last thing I'd like to talk to you about for best practices is our integrated approach to RTI, which is our Response to Intervention. And we do that for literacy and math, but we do it K through 4th grade, every single grade level. And we started this about four years ago. It's a block of 30 minutes each day for each grade level, and we have a team of five different support staff who are pulling students in terms of literacy, reading with them. But at the same time, and this is what makes Schweitzer different, our classroom teachers are also pulling groups of students, too. We've seen huge success with our RTI program. We were about, four years ago, about 47% of our students were reading at grade level. We're closer to 70% today, so that's another celebration. We're closer to 70% today, so that's another celebration. And then our third area that we focus on is extended learning time. This is something that we've been able to do because we've been a priority school. It's one of those benefits that because you get a little bit more attention and funding, you're able to do these things. We have found some really positive successes that hopefully will figure out creative ways to continue. One thing is we've had an in-school extended learning teacher. She works with kids, usually in math and science. For one semester, they're pulled from their special and she just gives them that extra push that they need. And again, we, we look at NWA scores to see what are the focus areas for these students. Sorry, I feel like I'm talking to... Two other huge things that we've been able to do is have a summer institute for our students, so for about a month in the summer, they can come back to Schweitzer, kind of set up like a summer school. But we've been able to do STEM science activities and, you know, it's not just summer school for our students who are struggling, it's an experience for all students. So you're going to see lots of differentiation. And then the last cool thing I want to share is, and I believe we have a couple other schools that are doing this also, we've had a kindergarten jumpstart program, which has been awesome. So our incoming kindergartners get a positive school experience, get to come for pretty much the month of July, have breakfast, have lunch, be a part of their classroom, learn some basic procedures, just to give them that jumpstart for school. So that was a lot of information about Schweitzer. Overall, it's a great place to be. I invite all of you to come anytime you would wish, just so you can see these things and not just hear about them. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I just had a great, a comment. I really appreciate what you all are doing. You guys have an excellent Leader in Me program. I've been to a couple of those. And what I like, you guys really care about our children, making sure that they get to that level, all the extra time. Like you said, strategy is important. I really appreciate all you guys' efforts. You're doing an awesome job.
Thank you. And I appreciate all the support that we get at the district level also. I feel like anytime I have a concern or a question, I have, you know, a ton of people who are there to support, so thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Moving on to item number 239.17, Citizen Comments, Agenda Items Only, Ms. Hines. Anyone wanting to make comments, Agenda Items Only? Okay. See you none. Moving on to item number 230.17, the Consent Agenda. This time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show as 6-1?
6-0. I mean, yeah, just 6-0.
6, okay.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Moving on to item number 231.17, Review and Approval Business Services and Finance Items, Mr. Larson Schiler.
Thank you, President Walker. Tonight, the first item that I have is the purchase of SIR's vehicles. Just a little bit about our fleet. District's non-transportation fleet consists of 41 vehicles, including vans, pickups, delivery trucks, a bucket truck, and dump trucks. The vehicles are used by our Building and Grounds Crew and custodial staff to service the district. Our recommended replacement cycle for vehicles has been and is, dump trucks, we replace every nine years or as required, vans and pickup trucks, replace seven, 10 years or as required, and pickup trucks with plows, we have a total of 12. Rotated, we rotate those down as, every three years, we replace, we start with grounds and then they go to the high school and then they go to the middle school and upper elementary. So we get nine years worth of use or again, as required, we have to replace them. Currently, our fleet consists of 32 vehicles, 10 years or older. As with our bus fleet, it is important to develop and maintain a replacement plan so that the fleet does not have to depend on replacement by bond issues. In 2015-16, we replaced a carpentry pickup, a food service delivery truck, and a large dump truck. Three vehicles I am recommending replacement of tonight include a 2001 van that is rusted out and it currently does not run. It needs extensive body and mechanical work to get it operable and to continue maintaining it, we would have to basically replace the body. We want to replace this with a pickup truck and that is in the agenda at 28,823. We have a 1996 van that is rusted out and needs suspension replaced. We're replacing that with a van for 24,140. And the 2001 mini dump truck, which is rusted and requires a new bed and extensive engine work. Total estimate for repairs is $24,000 and this is on a 15, 16-year-old vehicle. Our replacement is 48,818 for the dump truck. Three vehicles are within the budget, approved by the Board originally in June 2016.
Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cox, supported by Mrs. Madell. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show as 6-0?
Okay, item B.
Okay, thank you again, President Walker. This is the Head Start Playground Equipment. During our last grant cycle, the Head Start Program expanded to Walker Winter. A condition of the grant stipulated that playground equipment be appropriate for pre-kindergarten students to be installed. The Head Start Grant is funding the equipment totaling $57,513.
This time, I'll take a motion.
I'll move.
Moved by Mrs. Madell?
Select.
Supported by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Hines? Yes? Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show as 6-0?
Item C.
Okay, thank you again, President Walker. My final item tonight is for stormwater resolution. This is an updated application to the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, to allow district discharge stormwater through the storm sewer system. The application was submitted April 2016. This application required a new Board Resolution in support of the district's stormwater management plan, which is in your agenda.
Okay. Am I correct that we don't need to read that into, we don't have to read that into the minutes, correct?
No.
Okay.
At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show as 6-0?
Thank you. Moving on to item number 232.17, Head Start Monthly Report, Mrs. Madell.
As required by federal law, you have received a copy of the Head Start Monthly Report for January 2017 in your Board Packet that you received on the 7th of February. We have not had our monthly meeting, that will be coming up on Thursday. So this often happens where the Board Meeting comes before our monthly meeting, so I don't really have anything to share with you other than to, if there's any questions about the playground equipment, knowing that it is specifically designed for preschoolers, where the equipment that we have on the playground is designed for school-age students. So I got a real education about playground equipment when we were looking at the catalogs and the equipment and what was acceptable for Head Start and what wasn't. So if anybody has any questions about that, see me later.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell. Moving on to item number 233.17, Superintendent Report, Dr. Hamala.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thank you, President Walker. I'd like to share a couple of congratulations and then some thank-yous, as well as provide an update on our work toward our strategic plan goals and share information about the proposed school aid budget that was provided by the Governor this past week. First, I'd like to congratulate our young inventors from Franklin Middle School and Stevenson Middle School and Ms. Vandrell, their teacher and our leader of the Young Inventors Contest in Wayne Westland. Our students really did a wonderful job and we're so proud of their efforts and involvement. And I'd like to also thank Chuck Dartis, who's the owner of Alpha USA in Livonia. His company sponsors and supports the Young Inventors Program for three middle schools in Livonia, our two middle schools, and one middle school in Clarenceville. And we look forward to our participation and continued success next school year. I'd also like to congratulate our Wayne High students. They were called the Herd of Wayne on their success at the Fourth Annual Michigan High School Ethics Bowl. I had the opportunity to watch our team in the quarter and semifinal rounds and they were poised, articulate, and very thoughtful. They have about three minutes to determine how they're going to respond. They get the cases ahead of time, but then as a team, they have three minutes and then they have to respond. And then they have a minute to kind of look that over after another set of feedback and respond again. So they're under a time pressure, which is really interesting to watch, but they did a phenomenal job. Mr. Kengas did a great job in leading them and I wish our team the best as they prepare for the Nationals in North Carolina. I'd also like to thank Governor Snyder and his team, as well as our staff at the William D. Ford Career Technical Center for the Governor's visit last week on Thursday. The Governor took the time to visit our programs, to talk to our students, and to have a dialogue with Mr. K. and I about career technical education and the things he can do to ensure Michigan is helping students to achieve career and college readiness through CTE opportunities. We appreciate all the time the Governor spent with us and hope he found it rewarding and beneficial. Our student leaders of the tour did an excellent job describing their programs and what they like about CTE. Each one of them was both passionate and articulate as they shared. We're very proud to have showcased William D. Ford Career Technical Center. Regarding our strategic plan, the Educational Services Team has been working on our two instructional goals, development of the instructional plan and support for students' social, emotional, and behavioral needs. The instructional plan will include curriculum and assessment tools that are primarily digital and adaptive to individual student learning needs. Eventually, students will be connected to their learning at any time and in any place. Current efforts include exploring and implementing personalized one-to-one learning at each of our priority schools as early as next fall. Next steps will be to seek input from the many stakeholders who will be charged with implementing the plan. The team is also working to measure the outcomes related to the various programs that we have that are designed to meet the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students. Jenna Mullins and Dr. Stan Shatka have been working with our school administrators to mentor and provide guidance for behavioral interventions. Regarding our two funding goals, we continue to examine funding sources and look for opportunities to advocate for our needs. Working to highlight career and tech ed and resubmitting our Teacher and School Leader Grant are currently underway. I'd also like to provide an update on employee retention and attraction. Efforts continue to improve our recruitment. We are lining our interview process with our 5D and 4D frameworks. Those are our teacher and administrator evaluation and growth tools. These tools make clear what instructional and classroom success look like for our teachers and what administrative success looks like for our school leaders. We are implementing strategies related to the traction of culturally responsive staff and we're strengthening our partnerships with universities to attract potential candidates to our district through student teaching assignments and early recruitment. Specifically, we have Urban Pathways, our partnership with Eastern Michigan University. We have many other partnerships as well. Additionally, bargaining teams have been established and our bargaining is either taking place now or being scheduled with a focus on employee retention and attraction. We are also increasing the number and variety of communication and marketing tools we use to share the good word and work we do here in Wayne Westland. There has been a lot of growth in our social media marketing campaigns, which has really been made easy by the tremendous number of student successes and achievements we've had of late and the many accomplishments this school year. Our marketing campaign has expanded to television commercials, which started airing this month. The theme of the commercials are students learning through play at the pre-K level and demonstrating career and college-ready skills at the high school level. And there is so much going on here that is good and we want to make sure everybody knows about it and can take advantage of it for their children. Finally, regarding the Governor's proposed budget for schools, the proposal is an increase for approximately $100 per pupil in Wayne Westland, as well as $50 per high school student increase, and then an increase in funding for students who are at risk and funds for equipment and career and tech ed. While this is positive in that it is additional funding, it does not offset our losses in funding associated with declining enrollment. In fact, in the current year, we received $120 per pupil and the proposed $100 per pupil plus $50 per high school student actually leaves us short over the current year. The funding proposal does, however, highlight the differences in cost by level that were described in the state's funding study, so that's a positive highlight. And we will keep you posted as the budget process continues in Lansing. That's what I have to share tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Hamala.
You're welcome.
Moving on to item number 234.17, Citizen Comments, Non-Agenda Items. Okay.
Hi, my name is Matt Morrow and I'm from the city of Wayne. I would like to extend sincere congratulations to the Wayne Memorial High School's Ethics Bowl Champions, who continue to be the pride of our community, as well as the Franklin Middle School and Stevenson Middle School Young Inventors. It really brings me a sincere sense of pride to know that these types of endeavors can be possible within our community, especially given the great stress that the city of Wayne is in currently. It honestly shows the power of public education and what can be harnessed when we all work together, both as the administration and the staff. And honestly, those results cannot be achieved if we don't work together and have not been working together. It's phenomenal. You all have done a great job and I look forward to see how the school district progresses in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to item number 235.17, Review and Recommendations of the Board of Education, Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would like to congratulate the Wayne Memorial Men's Basketball Team on their division championship. My kids graduated from John Glenn, but they're out of the house and I still have to live with my wife, so congratulations to them and beating John Glenn at the same time. That's my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, well, Mrs. Madell and I had an opportunity to attend a coffee this morning with State legislator Kozlowski. And in the process of that meeting, someone brought up the fact that the Governor had been here to, to, to visit us and the VOTEC Center, Career Tech. And everybody said, yeah, that's neat. And it truly was. It's a big deal. What Representative Kozlowski offered to the group was that our Career Tech Center, Wayne D. Ford, is the best career tech center in the entire state. I know that the Governor wants to push career tech. I know also that he's looking at junior colleges to do that, but having been to our facility, I hope it allows him to see the potential that we have to offer in that particular area. It's a big deal. The, the young people that were here today, that we honored, those from the Inventors Group and those from the Ethics Bowl, that's a big deal too. I mean, actually, you know, kids from other school districts, other kids from other districts could have won those competitions, but they didn't. Wayne Westland students did that. It's a tribute to them and it's a tribute to the entire system that is bringing them along. It's, it's become almost commonplace today to say that public education is down, that it's not as good as it once was. Truth of the matter is, and I'm a former teacher, it's better today than it has ever been. In my career... In my career, we had this slogan that all kids could learn. You listen to the report from Switzer today. They figured out what my generation of teachers never did figure out, and that is how kids learn and how best to teach those kids to learn. We're bringing kids along today, improving their reading, improving their math skills in a way that was never done twenty-five or thirty-five years ago. So it's a big deal. And I would just like to say thank you to Dr. Hamala and also for every person who works in this school district, whether they're in the classroom or in a support role, for making these advances possible. Public education is in a good place today, and Wayne Westland is in a great place today.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Mr. Cox?
Madam President, I'd first like to congratulate all the students that received special recognition tonight. It's inspiring, frankly, and I'm very, very proud of them. I wish to report to the board and to the community that I have completed each of the nine parts of the Michigan Association of School Boards CVA Program. I was able to complete the last part, which was School Finance and Budget, this last Saturday in Troy. And, Madam President, I found this program to be incredibly worthwhile, even essential for anybody that's charged with decision-making on behalf of a school district. When I served seventeen years ago, there was no program such as this to educate board members on the issues finance, budget, school law, labor relations, legislative initiatives, all that are particular to the industry of education that very few people would actually come to the table, no matter their experience and have. So I believe that this program will improve the learning curve dramatically for many boards of education throughout the state. I know that MASB even favors mandatory education moving forward. I don't know the construct of how that works with elected officials, but I certainly think that everyone would benefit themselves and their district by doing this. So this was a very worthwhile program. I'm so glad I was able to attend. Thank you. The Wayne County Association of School Boards held a dinner presentation at RISA offices this past week for new board members in Wayne County. I intended this presentation accompanied by our superintendent, Dr. Hamala. The focus was on legislative issues affecting the school districts. Dr. Lippa had remarks regarding the role of RISA and what they do for us. And I'm very grateful for Dr. Hamala for her time and dedication. Thank you so much. The evening of Wednesday, February eighth, the Wayne Memorial Champions and the John Glenn Champions, now the Scholars of John Glenn, held their awards ceremony. I attended the John Glenn Program because, as you know, one person can't be in two places, except for the superintendent, who was at two places. I wish to congratulate all the students, the mentors, the supporters for their achievement, and also wish to notice to the board that I kind of wear a dual hat. I'm in my eighth year of service with the Westland Community Foundation. And as you know, we're very involved in that program. And I wanted to notice the board that I continue fundraising activities on behalf of that program as a member of the Westland Community Foundation Board. Also, thank you to Glenn and Patty Shaw and their family for their leadership and commitment to this program. And finally, Madam President, in an act of abject kindness and mercy, our beloved Vice President, Mrs. Carol Madell, took it upon herself to take me on a private tour of our district to review the changes and the improvements that have taken place since I was last a member of the board. Our adventure took us to numerous buildings and even construction sites where the students at William D. Ford are currently constructing beautiful homes. What first struck me on this tour was the cleanliness and general level of maintenance of our facilities. Frankly, it surpassed my preconceptions. I said during the last board meeting that my former work took me to military bases throughout the country from coast to coast. And frankly, our facilities are maintained in exact... You would think that you were on a military base. They were just astoundingly clean and well-maintained. It was truly impressive and I thought very respectful to our students, who have to be there all day, and also respectful to the taxpayers who have purchased all of that property and no doubt want it to be properly maintained. Soon though, even while I was overwhelmed with the cleanliness, the conduct of the students that we encountered, and we tried to skirt the students as much as possible. They were in school, but classes did adjourn. And we had the opportunity to talk to some schools and administrators. In one case, a young man of about fifteen turned and was surprised by my standing there. He was talking to his friends, and he said, "Good morning, sir." And he stuck his hand out, and I shook his hand, and he introduced me. And I was just melting with pride. He was just so respectful. I was also able to see something. There had been a car accident, and a couple of children were involved in the car accident. Thankfully, they weren't seriously injured, but it was a serious car accident. And I was able to overhear the administrators talking about the kids and where their head was at today. And it was very obvious that they're their kids, and they care very deeply for them. And I wouldn't have been able to see that had it not been for our tour. So Carol, thank you for that.
No problem.
I also watched a first-grade class walk in single file behind their teacher quietly, like this. And every single one of them was as quiet as a mouse, who walked in a straight line. And I don't know if there's anything cuter than that, but I haven't seen it yet if there is. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Hamala, Cheryl Watson, and Sue Rossin from your office. They've been wonderful to me as I try to, you know, assemble the IT side of everything and the registration of keys. They've been wonderful, and I really, really appreciate all of their efforts. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Ms. Hines?
I'd like to congratulate all of our students with the ethics. The Spelling Bee Champions, like, they win like almost every year. Even the National Career Education Honor Society. Like, our students are very bright. I'm just so, like, this district is so amazing. We are the Trail Blazers. I have friends in other districts, like, "Wow, how do you guys do these things?" We have a lot of compassionate staff. Our students, like David Cox said, I mean, everybody takes pride in everything. And it's just so amazing. Even these different plans with Switzer, just like David Hicks Hustles, you know, everybody's taking the piece, and they're really involved. And as a board member, I'm honored to be on this board. And my goal and strategy is I want to get more community members involved. We did start the Koalas Club, like Inkster, Wayne, and Westland. So what I'm trying to do is get parents, volunteers, help us with our children, help read, help tutoring. You know, even I want to work with the Senior Center, because sometimes they have a lot to offer as well. So bridge that gap in the community together, just that one extra thing that we need to do. And I'm also excited to announce that I was elected the Chair for the Thirteenth Congressional District on the Education Committee. So now I have more resources to really help with other districts, because we all have to work together. We're in trying times right now with education, and our goal is to really continue like Wayne Westland is doing and to be an example to other districts. So thank you, guys. You guys are doing a fabulous job. I love you, Dr. Hamala. I tell you every day, you are awesome. I mean, seriously. You make our job a lot easier, and I have awesome board members as well. So I do, I enjoy coming to these meetings, and this is like my heart. I really enjoy being a board member.
Thank you, Ms. Hines, and congratulations on that. Mrs. Madell?
Thank you. As Mr. Buckaloo said, we got a chance to go to coffee. He stopped with one. I went on to another one in Inkster today. So I've had a lot of caffeine. I always like going to these because at the time of the day that the coffees are held, obviously, it is senior citizens that make up most of the attendees at these coffees. But they always have really great information to share with other seniors, and they look forward, I think, for Tom and myself to come and share, because sometimes we're the only contact they have with the school district, because their kids are grown and gone, grandchildren are grown and gone, or are living in other communities. And we are their only contact sometimes. So it gives us a chance to showcase, like I said last month, when I got a chance to showcase some of our programs. And again, I did the same thing today with our Career Tech, with the governor's visit, and also letting them know that we have our two spring musicals coming up, one at John Glenn on April sixth through the eighth, and one at Wayne Memorial on May fourth through the sixth. Tickets are available at both schools. Come on out and support our drama department and our students, because they do a great job. Also got a chance to mention the Ethics Bowl and the competition that they had trounced. So it bodes well for public education. When I was at Inkster, a young lady was there, a college student, and she was concerned that maybe students coming out of a high school need to know more about college loans and things like that. And she did not attend our school district, but it gave me a chance again to promote what we do here in Wayne Westland for our students and parents who are going to be attending college, that we do bring in the financial aid people to discuss, that our counselors are working with our students to fill out the paperwork for scholarships to help them with their college debt that they will soon accrue. So again, gave me a chance to show what we are doing that's great in Wayne Westland. Don't forget, we also have our Wayne High Safari Night coming up on April seventh. Get your tickets, come join us, silent auction, entertainment, great food. And our Spelling Bee, a couple of us, Mrs. Walker. We missed Mr. Buckaloo this year. He's also a usual attendee, but he decided to go on vacation. But we got a chance, and Mrs. Hines joined us to attend our thirty-seventh annual Earl Scherbogian Spelling Bee. So we now have two winners who will be going on February twenty-fifth down to the Charles H. Wright Museum and participating. And we've done very well in the last couple of years. We've, you know, haven't quite won, but we've come in second, third, and hopefully, maybe this year will be the year that we are number one. I got a chance to go to Center Line High School. Our Wayne High JROTC cadets were part of that competition. And again, this is kind of a building year for the cadets that went, but they placed third. And I thought that was pretty good, because some of the competition from a couple of the high schools was pretty darn good. So I was very pleased with them, and they were excited that they did as well as they did. Got a chance to go to History Day at Franklin Middle School to see their projects that the students had done. And a lot of thought went into some of them. They weren't all just display boards. There was musical talent, little play vignettes type of things. So it wasn't all just, "Here's my storyboard, and here's the person I researched." And I understand that Stevenson also did the same thing, but I had another commitment that night, so I couldn't attend. I did get a chance to go to the open house at Career Tech, and I didn't go there just for the food. Although Chef Tony does take care of me, though. I love that man. We went there, and there was a lot of people, a lot of parents. I invited the seniors to come over and take a look at this program. Go into the classrooms. It was student-led, so that we could see exactly what's going on in this building, what we are teaching our students. But the best part was going to the National Technical Honor Society induction. And the students were so excited. There were, oh, gosh, I can't... Maybe thirty students that were inducted this year into that program. So congratulations to them. A lot of congratulations have been given by all of you, for our students. It doesn't matter whether you play a sport, or whether you're on the ethics team, or a young inventor, or what it is that you do. I am so proud of our students. They get a great education here if they want it. And you just have to reach out and grab it. It's there for the taking. Take advantage of it. It's free right now. Later on in life, you have to pay for it. So grab it while you can with both hands and take what you can get, because we have great futures starting right here. Kind of worked out, didn't it?
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell. I just want to thank Ms. Brickley for her presentation about Switzer and also allowing her children, the students at her school, to come and lead us in the pledge. Blake Lee Meek and Emma Tanner. We always appreciate when the kids come in and lead us in the pledge. I want to take the time to thank each and every one of you for taking time out your day to come and spend with us and see what's going on in the district. We enjoy when you come out, and we love the feedback that you give us, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. We like to hear from you, and we thank you. Be safe, and we hope to see you all next month. And at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support. Moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Ms. Hines. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Okay, motion carries. See you all next month. Oh, it's not a problem, Brett. You know, you can always count on me.